Good evening, residents of Litchfield, and welcome to the December tenth, two thousand and fourteen school board meeting. I'd like to start the pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, and my God, individual liberty and justice.
Revisions to the agenda. None at this point? Alright. Summary of non-public from... Is that right, November nineteenth?
Michelle.
I'm sorry. Yes, because at the December third meeting, you approved the November nineteenth minutes.
Mr. Barker made a motion to approve the non-public minutes of November nineteenth, two thousand and fourteen, as written. Mr. York, second. The motion carried four zero zero. Which now brings us into presentations and recognitions. I'm not certain if everyone's here or not. Is Gabrielle here?
We got a bunch of them looking in if they want to come in. Coach, they can come in.
Come on in, guys.
Yeah. You'll get ready to go trick or treating. Let's go pick your...
Do we want to wait for it and see if the head coach has up?
Is the coach here?
He said, "Coach Patterson," he said the coaches were...
Sorry?
Yes, sir.
Oh, there he is. Excellent. Alright, well, at this moment, I'd like to congratulate the Campbell High School football team for their victory. And say congratulations. It was a great game. As a matter of fact, I think everyone here on the board was at the game. It was a fun time. So, congratulations.
Congratulations. It's awesome.
I actually have some certificates for everyone. I have an order here, so you'll have to help me out, but... First one's Christian Camacho. Just make sure we're... Because someone left.
Oh.
And Christian's who got one.
That's pairs with this one.
There you are. Congratulations.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
I'll never know the names. Michael Killren.
He's wrestling right now. They're opening John Stark.
Alright, excellent. Kyle, I know you're here. Kyle Manny.
Thank you very much.
Connor Quigley.
He's also wrestling.
Alright. And Coach Kosh.
Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate the season.
Congratulations, Coach.
Mark Cohen.
Not here.
Drew Gora.
Not here. Coaching other sports.
Tom Kugler. Philip Miller. Aaron Rapole.
He's coaching hockey.
Tarek Roth.
He's Albert Del Stracco.
Boy, everybody's pretty busy, huh? David Myatt.
David.
Excellent.
Don't worry.
That is?
No. Hang on.
There it is.
I just saw it.
Alright. Well, sorry everyone couldn't be here, but again, congratulations, guys. It was a great season for you. Hopefully you can do it again next year.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job.
Thanks, guys.
Come on, let's get Coach...
Yeah, except for Gabriel.
If we missed anybody, just get ahold of Coach Patterson and let us know.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
She's not yet, right?
I will. Thank you very much. You got it.
And that will bring us on to correspondence. Thank you.
He was supposed to be here in his music.
Got it.
Is that him?
I think we had an email this week.
I don't think so. Anyone have anything? John?
That email goes to the school board from the budget committee chair.
I didn't see that.
Nope. You hadn't sent anything to me?
No. I afforded it all.
That'll bring us to the approval of draft minutes for twelve, three, fourteen.
Were you here last week?
I wasn't. We're not going to be able to approve the minutes.
I don't think we can approve them with just two of us.
Put it off till...
I read them when I wasn't here.
You can table until next week.
Yeah, so just table until next week.
But I mean, if it's two to one, it doesn't... I mean, two with one abstain, subconscussive.
Let's just... I mean, I'll make a motion to accept them, as is.
And I'll second. Any conversation? John?
Aye.
Aye.
Abstain.
Two zero one.
That's a majority when you only get three.
Yeah. They looked... I read them all. I felt like I was here.
Do we need forum? We'll move into superintendent comments.
Just a couple of quick thank yous going to the district SIS committee, one member of which was with us today. Today, they spent the afternoon in Lunedary looking at Follett Aspen, the second of two visits. The first one was at Bow High School. Much appreciated. When you take staff out of the building, normally it means extra work and extra time, and this is a group that has meant a lot to try and move us forward with the new SIS. And the other thank you is to Mr. Jack Pinchiero, who I got to talk to at five o'clock in the morning the other day about the weather and where we are. And I just want to thank the... Jack and the folks that work with him for the level of communication and the level of support. It's never easy making the calls, but, you know, their work and the communication about where the crews are in terms of the road maintenance and what the weather's going to be makes a difficult job a little bit easier, so thank you to those folks.
School board comments? Committee reports? Budget committee.
We're going to save all our time for you, Brian.
That's alright. I could spend a lot of time on it, but I'm not going to. Part of last evening's budget presentation was GMS, LMS, and salaries and benefits. When we got to salaries and benefits, the budget committee made several comments, and it's a budget we'll be voting on tomorrow, but one of their thoughts from several members were as far as being heavy on teachers in certain grade levels. Their report was passed out by Mrs. Spencer with numbers that don't quite go with the policy. It was sent out by Syndicature today, who I forwarded off to the board. And some of the feeling is that we are heavy on third grade, that one can be eliminated, fourth grade, one can be eliminated, sixth grade, and seventh grade. Again, that's looking at numbers that Mr. Spencer passed out and inquired as to why we weren't following our own policy. And Syndicature was nice enough to send a policy, which I did not have at the time. And looking at those numbers, it seems that we're in line with next year's projections to have those classes, all but one. Third grade, which we've had discussion, is a smaller class. That was the biggest conversation or biggest piece that came out of last night, aside from his going through the CHS budget and them making suggestions as far as cuts in that particular budget. So... It's... It'll be interesting when we come down to our final cuts on January eighth. Spotted from the budget committee. There's no one here from any other committees. John, did you meet anyone, right?
No, we're... If we don't get... Brian didn't get anything back from Kevin, then, you know, we'd like to meet next Tuesday, but if we don't get anything back, then we may just table everything till next year and pick it up in January and not look to make any recommendations.
Now, we'll go on to hold on finished business. Fiscal year sixteen warrant articles.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The warrant articles are still a work in progress, as you can see. We do have the date for the deliberative session, which I believe Michelle has put out there this February the seventh.
February seventh, to me.
We will make that change on the warrants. We have had the vendor come out and take a look at the security upgrades that we've discussed to give us a price quote on that for that particular warrant, so it's still a work in progress. We're hoping by next Wednesday's meeting, we'll have more greater definition to the prices of those that we need to have put in. So, there really is no action required on that this evening.
Alright. Brings us through the fiscal year two thousand and sixteen default.
Thank you. Again, I have provided you with some summary memorandum, but I also gave you a hard copy. We've made some adjustments. And I will take a few moments to go over some of the numbers for you and answer any questions that you may have. Again, this is draft format. I would anticipate that you will look it over and take a review by comparison to what we're recommending as the default. Just by, again, by summary, seventy-five percent of any budget, whether it be the recommended budget or the default budget, is comprised of salaries and benefits. So, the first two lines, I don't know conceptually if you want me to go over how we get to it, but I'll draw out some highlights for you. The two biggest changes obviously come under the salaries and benefits. The default budget does include the additional para-recommendations that were presented to the board and included in the recommended budget. Those are IEP-driven, and by that nature, they must be in the default budget. We did eliminate from the default budget those recommended positions. I believe there was a .5 FTE math tutor, and we were looking to add some hours to the administrative assistant and guidance, and there were a few other position adding and some stipends, I believe, as well. So, those salaries and the corresponding benefit amounts were taken out of the recommended budget and were included, however, in the default budget. Again, I won't go over each and every line, but there have been some adjustments, and I can provide you with greater detail and answer any questions that you have next week. If you want to present some questions to me, I'll make sure that I get all the data in detail for you. But a couple of the major changes, other than salaries and benefits, there were some adjustments made in the area of special education tuition. Any area of the budget that made a... I took all inflationary rates out. Anything that was anticipated expense obviously is not included in the budget. And also, down towards the bottom, the board did provide direction regarding utilities, to flat budget on utilities, not to anticipate any cost increase or change of rates, or we use the same budget amount that we had for this year for the default. So, again, as you can see, the default baseline, when all of that is added up, there's approximately two... No, approximately two hundred and sixty-seven, three hundred and ninety-one dollar adjustment of all the reductions and increases added to the baseline. Brings us to a total of eighteen nine twenty-four, one eighty-six, and you add that to the top, which is the operating net, if you will, or on the second page. So, we have the eighteen nine twenty-four, one eighty-six, which is all the adjustments from the two thousand and fifteen budget to come up with the recommended default budget of twenty million, one ten, four seventy-six. Add to that, that is for the general fund, add to that food service and the grants, it brings you to a total of twenty-one, two seventy-two, six thirty-eight. Give you the recommended operating budget that was put forth from the school board to the budget committee of twenty-one, nine thirty-four, seventy-five. The draft default of twenty-one, two seventy-two, six thirty-eight leaves a differential of six hundred and fifty-seven thousand, eight hundred and thirty-seven dollar difference or a reduction of three percent. Again, to the total for the general... That's the operating budget for the general fund. You have the figures there as well. There's a little bit of a difference because the food service budget was actually requested for two thousand and sixteen lower than the two thousand and fifteen, so we took that into consideration as well. A lot of information, as you've heard in the past. It's not a science. It's... We go through and we do a comparison of what was requested, what needs to be in the budget and what can be taken out for one-time expenditures.
So, I'd like to see the non-sped transportation costs truly reflect what we have in our line items for our budget this year. I know we've had to move monies around.
Okay.
For that, so I think that that line should be a true reflective of what our expenditures are going to be with the fact that we have had an increase in vocational.
Right.
Transportation. Instead of using the budget number that we passed in our budget, we ought to be using an actual number, and that should be for any of these line items.
For two thousand and fifteen.
For two thousand and fifteen. Should be an actual number that we expect based on whatever funds we moved around from one line item to another line item.
We can do that.
To cover costs.
We can do that.
So, that reflection is not a twenty-one percent increase, but truly a reflective of the five to six or seven percent increase.
Of the contractual increase that we signed after this with first student, we can do that. There will be a little bit of a bump up to the vocational transportation as well, so we can do that. We'll adjust the fifteen, and then that obviously will...
I don't expect the number to change, but...
Right. But it will impact the differential, right.
It should change in the differential.
We can do that. Yep.
Mr. Markowitz, just to check, the additional position items required by IEP should total one sixty-one, seven fifty, and sixty-seven cents. So, that's...
They made?
Seven new pairs. One that's basically been pushed out of the IDEA grant.
Right.
And then, the part-time reading specialist at CHS is required by IEP. We have two students up there now, and I believe two more will be...
You have between the pairs, the transfer of the pair out of the IDEA grant and the specialist, those salaries total one forty-nine, eight twenty-seven. And the difference between that and the amount being three fifty-nine, four thirty is obviously the contractual obligations that we have for the collective bargaining agreement.
Yes, that's everything.
That's everything, right.
Fine.
Yep. And then, just to take that one step further, deleted from the two thousand and sixteen recommended budget were, just to give a quick descriptive math tutor, five days to the librarian contract, stipends for science, tech, and math, enrichment and math program, and five days added to the guidance administrative assistant. Those were deleted, not included in the default calculation.
Are there any other questions this time?
Again, I'd be more than happy to bring greater detail. I just wanted to give you kind of an overview to see where it's sitting with the recommended budget that left the school board to the budget committee.
Budget committee would be happy to see this, one way or another.
It will stay as a work product at the school board level until you folks move it to approval, and then at that time, it will be...
But they'll see the dollar amounts.
Yeah. Yeah.
The other thing I think that we need probably a little bit more detail in is the workbooks, curriculum review schedule. We need to make sure that that forty-six oh forty-one... Should new books be in the default budget?
If it matches the amount spent in the prior year in that budget line, I believe.
So, you need to... We just... You guys just need to verify and maybe bring some explanation on that one, because that's a... I know that's a line item that can create some conversation, so I think we probably... You probably will need to present that one because it's just so large.
I know the board, we kind of went back and forth on that, I believe, last year. If memory serves me correct, we would... Is it new required? Is it new discretionary? Is it new part of the curriculum, five-year plan?
Right. I mean, if it's new based on the fact that we're going from, let's say, forty students in, you know, French to fifty students, I don't know if that's a default budget item. So, I think we've had that discussion.
Yeah. We'll bring you some clarity to all that.
Clarity on that one. We'll do. And benefits just seem... Since benefits, well, seven point five percent, shouldn't that be six point nine percent? Because that's the number you got.
That is solely for health insurance, but again...
Yeah, but shouldn't that be adjusted to reflect the fact that the number we have is six point nine percent? Isn't that the number you were given that you gave us for the health?
For health, but that's... This is everything.
Oh, and dental.
Dental, this is...
But I mean, but health was just six point nine.
Health was just six point nine, and then your retirement went up. There were new rates, there's two-year rate disclosure on that. And again, that doesn't just... That also includes people that changed from single to family plan. So, that's everything. That's kind of the melting part of all benefits. Would you like some breakout of that? Some update to that, so you can see that, where that broke out? I have that, so I'll...
Yeah, I would probably say that that's probably a good idea.
Yeah, I'll give you the breakout for...
I think anything that's a large amount above ten grand is probably something that probably needs a little bit of board review, maybe next week, and first time we're back in January.
Yep, I'll provide it to you, and you can take a look at that.
Sure.
No problem.
Want to have any other questions this time? Thank you, Frank.
You're welcome.
Bring us on to new business. Start off with the two thousand and fourteen, fifteen school board meeting calendar review.
The old calendar had the board meeting on the fourth and eleventh of March.
No, eleventh and twenty-fifth.
Well, the eleventh and twenty... No, can't be eleventh and twenty-fifth.
Yeah, the old calendar.
Oh, sorry, eleventh and twenty-fifth, you're right. And the eleventh is the day after the vote, the town vote on the tenth, and we normally don't meet on the night after that in case we have to have a recount, which has to be re... Calculated by the Friday, in this case, Friday the thirteenth. So, we just move it to make sure that the seating of the board won't be impacted by any potential recount. Other than that, it stays the same.
So, the eleventh moved to the eighteenth?
The eleventh and twenty-fifth got moved to the fourth and eighteenth, so both meetings moved up one week.
My days are numbered already.
Can I throw a few extra meetings in?
No, it's okay. We're good.
Do we have any questions on the meetings?
Do we need to meet on February the fourth? Maybe we're going to be meeting in deliberative that week also?
What's your principal's curriculum that night?
Is it? Okay.
Mary?
I make a motion to accept the new schedule.
Second.
Further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Three zero zero. Bring us on to job descriptions. The first one is principal job description.
There should be three documents in that. The principal job description, eleven twenty-four fourteen, and the two thousand and seven job description.
Then is this... The eleven twenty-four is this one. That's the one you sent me tonight.
No, I didn't. I wanted to replace the old one. I wanted to...
Oh, I'm sorry. I thought you wanted me to replace that.
No, I said added, not replaced. But it'll work.
I'm too tired.
No, it's okay.
Oh, seven is sent. Is that the one you're talking about, this one?
That's the old one.
Yeah, and the other one's in here, too.
The other one, I gave you a clean version, and then I gave you the comparison highlighted. And the highlight is this section of Common Language. So, if you look at the... If you look at the proposed version, it is essentially the same except for the highlights, the unhighlighted. So, working collaboratively with the district directors of curriculum instruction, special education, finance, human resources, food services, and technology, the principal was responsible for. In performing these classes, the principal shall implement and maintain the school board administrative policies and philosophy, reports to superintendent of schools, and two asterisks down below indicating that paraprofessionals and... Special education teachers, the supervision would occur in collaboration with the director of special services. Down below, the first section is adapted. There was a set of principal standards that were the Interstate Consortium on Principal Certification, in essence, the one, two, three, four, five, the first six bullets, and those six and two others were recently included in the New Hampshire Principal Evaluation Frameworks approved by the Department of Education, so that... Those two now will make it align with the state recommended document. And then, the rest of the eight areas are essentially the same with the occasional addition of the more direct notion that we expect building administrators to collaborate and work with SAU staff. So, with the director of curriculum instruction performs these things, with input from faculty and the directors of curriculum develops the program of studies. Those things are required now, for example, by procedure. Dr. Hion is in charge of the perk process, which program of studies changes have to go through, but as discussed a few meetings ago, we're trying to make it more explicit, so there's no lack of understanding. Other than that, it's essentially the same. Personnel administration section, assistant superintendent, or his or her designee in the selection, orientation, and training of staff members. Section seven on page three, two changes. Remember, the board approved last year in its plan. The directors... The site managers, the facility managers, no longer report to the principals. They report to the business administrators, but the principals need the ability to direct the site managers on an as-required basis if something comes up during the day. And I know that Mr. Markowitz may not always agree with that last little bullet, but I was wanting to...
Depends what data.
To write the job description, and he did have his say when we discussed it.
So, is that an issue where the site facility manager reporting to the BA? Is there a reason why administrative school couldn't just go to the BA and say, "I need this done," and allow the BA to direct that, or...
Yep. It's just that there are times, for example, that something will happen, if there's a spill in the building. I mean, we want it to be clear that the principal can say, "Hey, you need to go..."
Yeah.
The principals are doing that. We really are pushing, and you've heard Matt Bennett, but the school do software, which is our facilities management, we really do try to push all to school do to put it in there. For instance, we had a call-out yesterday. We had a leak up in the roof. We've got quite a few leaks. So, something like that, that we want to make sure there's no electricity leak, and don't put it in school do, call out the facility manager, let them know about it. They go and check out and make sure it's just a leak or not. So, things like that, but if the principal wants something over and above that, we're asking them to put it in school do. So, it's kind of a work in progress. They're used to being able to go to the facility manager all the time, and my argument to that is, I need you to put it in school do so I can monitor it, so that I can watch over and see and make sure we're putting priorities on certain things. So, that's taking place. I mean, the biggest key you have in that is in the sense that if somebody at site facilities has been given a directive from the BA, "I need you to get these four or five things done because they're in school do" or whatever, and an administrator decides that something that they have, whatever that may be, is a little bit more pressing, we're now saying that they can make that pressing need a little bit more important. You guys don't see that as an issue?
I'm sorry, I was sent a stream.
So, you are using school do.
Yeah.
So, a building site facilities person or custodian or whoever's process has been given whatever the tasks are that they need to complete for the day, and they're in the process of doing those things, and that's the direction they've been given. So, now, something occurs and an administrator decides, whatever that is, is more important than what the other person's been asked to do. So, what we've done is we put poor employee in the middle of trying to decide who's more important. The administrator, administrator person, who asks on an infrequent basis for something, or the person that directly manages the person, in this case, the BA, who's giving me my tasks to do for today. Or it could be as simple as, you know, our building managers in the building have given a custodian. I mean, because this is probably the positions that we're discussing here more than anything else. So how's the poor lowly employee supposed to decipher that out and not, and not ruffle somebody's feathers?
John, I, personally, I would think that the building administrator uh, would know enough of the importance, like, let's take, awesome, we have a roof leak. We have a pile in the main entrance and the students are coming in. I, I would think that that building administrator would know that that's a priority right now regardless of that person doing, so you eliminate a slip and fall or anything else.
I, I would agree. What happens, I'd be just as crazy on that. Teacher came in and their trash can's full and we have a water leak they're working with. And the tra- teacher's demanding their trash can be emptied or, or whoever is demanding, probably not a teacher or whatever, but.
Right, the teacher's not the.
But.
When you say building administrator, I'm thinking the principal, the vice principal. I, I would think would be the other person that could direct.
Right, that's correct.
Yeah. So i- if, like you said, the hourly janitor, it's, wh- whomever is doing something.
It's a fine line too.
And also the math teacher says, hey, you don't wait for your waistband.
Those facility folks, the custodians are there, they, they wanna accommodate, they wanna do, you know, to make life easier if there's trash and, like, for instance, there's paper towels not in the bathroom, you know, there's a call.
I'm one, I'm, I'm one hundred percent.
But I hear what you're saying as well.
But you have a, we have a policy.
It's a delicate balance.
And this, this is going outside of school do policy. Matter, no matter, you know, you, there ought to be something that can get put in, you know, I don't know if school do can do this. But if there's an emergency and boom, 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 and it, there has to be a way to flag an emergency through school do that immediately hits everybody's phone, computer, email, whatever, that would then make that start the process. But what you're doing in this is you're saying there's a way around school do.
There, there is a way to answer your question, Mr. York. There, uh, school do, you can flag as an emergency. And I believe most, if not all, the custodians do have the iPhones that they have an app that will immediately alert them to that. In fact, we've had that discussion with the facility managers that if they do not have, um, smartphones, we need to upgrade them to smartphones, so they get those school do notifications. I have it on my phone, you get them, I, I'll know, if something's flagged as an emergency, we get, we get an instant alert on that.
I, I just have a very difficult time making a policy that is in direct conflict of another policy or procedure that we are requesting, which is school do. Which we invest a lot in.
Let me give you an example. There was an assembly at LMS in the gymnasium and a staff member fainted and fell. And we had to call an ambulance. I don't think the principal should have to run to their office, pass the custodian and put into the computer to have the custodian go clear the way so the ambulance can come. That doesn't make sense to me in that environment. But I do understand you're gonna have, you're gonna have to have some conversations about resetting what the expectations are.
I, I would, I would agree one hundred percent with that, but that's common sense. That shouldn't need a, that shouldn't need a, a line item in a, in a, uh, uh, job description.
One would think.
It could, it could, it could have a line item in the, see, see, I believe the line item is better equipped into the site manager's responsibilities than the principal's responsibilities. So in this case, the site manager in his job description would be, in an emergency situation, would accept direction from the principal. But it's not a principal's job description. As long as you want them to use, the administrators to use school do. Emergency situation, you know, people should use common sense. If not, then you have that issue to deal with. But, you know, this is your job description. So I've, I've, I've said my piece.
Maybe I'll start, Clark, when I'm honest. Next is job description of the high school athletic director.
Similarly, there were two versions of, of this. One was approved when the high school opened. And one was approved on five eighteen two thousand and eleven. Uh, the major difference was it added co-curricular responsibilities to the director of athletics. Um, and took away the reporting to both the principal and the superintendent, but the superintendent stayed in the line down below. So in the track changes, you'll see that, um, in essence, all of the, uh, revisions are essentially moving this back to what was originally approved, except that which is highlighted in yellow. So, uh, partway down, the first piece, the administrative piece, when it was revised in two thousand and eleven, it said that the, uh, athletic director would be responsible determining scholastic eligibility for all high school candidates for, uh, athletic teams, and we added co-curricular clubs. If you're gonna do that for the athletes, you may as well do the whole batch and run the, the, uh, the students once and make lists for co-curricular. We do that now. It was also part of the justification of the increase in hours were the, uh, athletics administressant, who all, who does that now and does it well. So I didn't see any reason to take that away or change the hours of the administressant. Uh, it's done, it's done well. Um, the rest is just taking away auditorium, co-curricular references. Uh, some discussion and we may want to come back to this at some point. I've had some conversations with Principal Rothaus about this. Um, if you go to licensure and certification requirements. Uh, New Hampshire physical education teaching license on page three is a requ- is a requirement currently. And traditionally, physical education certified people have held that position almost exclusively. Now still disproportionately so, but increasingly, finding people who can do the job of athletic director, which is a, a demanding task, often don't have physical education certification. In several surrounding districts, you have, you have teachers who have significant coaching and, and athletic administration experience who move into full-time athletic directors. Uh, Nashua and Hudson, I believe, are both in that situation now. So I think if, uh, if, uh, Coach Patterson, uh, leaves this year, we may want to reconsider that particular, um, criteria. I think because the position is a member of the high school administrative team, along with the director of guidance and the principal and the assistant principal. Uh, it would pretty much be a requirement that they have teaching lic- teaching licensure. And the reason is when both the principal and the assistant principal are to the building, one of the two directors actually supervises students and is required to discipline them and so they would need to know the laws and regulations appropriate for, uh, operating a school and dealing with students. If something inappropriate happened and the person did not have teaching certification, it might put us in a difficult situation. Not that it wouldn't, you could change it and, and simply provide them, uh, appropriate PD, but I think there's some advantages of having people with, uh, an educational background. So this may be something we want to visit at some other point if we end up in a hiring situation.
So who is going to take on the responsibilities of co-curricular programs?
That is in the job description of the principal and it, it never was taken away from the principal. And actually, I believe that's what happens now. The supervision of, actually still comes from the superintendent, or from the principal.
Why are we adding a dotted line to the superintendent for the athletic director?
That's essentially what it is. Athletics is a high-profile situation, especially at the high school. Um, they're very public. Um, they're, they're one of the I would say more important positions. You can, some, some, uh, school districts have a district, uh, director of athletics. And I spoke to both Principal Rothaus and Principal Leclader, uh, and, and both strongly, uh, suggested keeping it as a high school position. Mr. Leclader is very pleased with how things are operating, uh, at the middle school and Principal Rothaus would like to see it remain as, as a high school position. Um, whether Sarah Weathers down below, especially, you know, the following functions are considered central and then responsible to boo- to building principal and the superintendent or designee, so if, if, if you remove superintendent above, it's still down there below for the administrative piece. I'm comfortable either way.
I think it makes more sense to, I mean, it looks contradictory if you don't have it be the same. It looks like we missed it and weren't sure. Also, I feel like we should set the, if that's what we mean, then we should set the expectation.
No, but I'm just trying to, I, you know, I understand that it's a high-profile position, but it is part of the high school administrative team, not part of the SAU administrative team.
But it supports the middle school too.
No, it do- it doesn't.
At all?
Nope.
And he, I thought he was.
So I don't understand why we're making it part of a SAU management team when it has no real reason other than, I mean, it, the director of athletics is probably no more important than the director of guidance in, in the sense of the high school. I would imagine that those two positions, you know, one is, is winning athletic events, the other one is preparing students for the rest of their life into college preparation and, and that aspect, so, uh, and I don't expect we would dock the director of guidance to the SAU office, so.
At least one version of the director of guidance job description does exactly that. It's a district function. But as I say, as, as long as it's there in the second line, I'm fine with that.
Well, what does that mean? I, I, I mean, I see what you're saying, John, and I think we should be careful about setting expectations for the staff. Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
If, if the principal of the high school's running the administrative team, then that's what it should be.
Yep.
So what is responsible, I'm not sure what that means, that first bullet, under administrative. I mean, I, if I heard you correctly, you're saying, oh, I'm fine, taking it out of the reports to line, but leaving it in the administrative line.
Well, in the first version, it was there in both places, in the second version, it was there only in the second place. You could make a, you, I think you can make a case that, that a clean line reporting along with the principal might be more appropriate.
I mean, the bo- the, the bottom line is that, is that the superintendent, whoever that superintendent is, has the authority to walk up to and address any employee in the district and have a conversation with that employee. And with, with that knowledge of being, the fact that they oversee everything. I don't think they need a specific permission, and I believe that's what this is giving them, to
In the job title?
To.
Yep.
I hate to use the word metal, but I don't have another word to use. And I think that that creates, I mean, I, personally, I don't believe the superintendent should be having to deal with high school athletics. If something occurred, the superintendent would be dealing in high school athletics because of the issue that's involved. Because it would have gone through the chain of command in the process that would have put it on his, his or her desk. So I, I think that removing the superintendent and, and I would agree with Mary, that first line means if you're just responsible to the building principal, it already says reports to the high school principal, so that first bullet point can be totally removed and just start with responsible for administering all athletic policy procedures, um, in that process. And if that same thing is, is in the director of guidance, then we ought to correct that one also.
I think the rationale makes sense.
And again, with it there or not there, I mean, like John said, I mean, you're, you're still someone.
I mean, you have the authority without it needing to be in a job description to have a conversation with, um,
Certainly helps out.
An employee, yeah.
So does somebody want to move those two edits to the job description?
I will move those two edits.
I'll second.
Actually, I don't think yet to the second, it just, you'll bring it back for a, uh, is this first reading or is this a, uh,
First reading.
Revision?
Just the revision.
Revision is fine.
Revision? Yeah, I've just, yeah, we just make a final, see, we'll review it again next week and then we should, or are you just gonna move it?
Me too.
Just vote.
Just vote? Alright.
Do we have a second?
I second.
Any more conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Three zero zero.
Did you want to?
We didn't vote on the first one.
We did not.
No, you didn't, I, no.
I didn't know if you were gonna make the changes and bring them back for a final clean. I mean, are you, are you needing these to be done or are you not willing to let the two members that are missing say a final version to vote next Wednesday? I mean, I don't know where, where, where you guys are moving with this.
I think timeline, I mean, you'd like to get them done as soon as possible and the other two members saw the last draft of this, now they didn't see this one, right? Or did they? No, they did not.
Well, they would have seen it because it would have been in their board packet.
Right. So I'd say we can go ahead and vote.
So we need a motion to approve the first one, the principal one?
Yep.
I'll make a motion to approve the principal job description as revised. It's a tough one, John.
It is, because I don't agree with that line.
Let the administration be the administration.
That line?
Yeah, I don't, I don't. But I'll second it, just so that it can be voted on.
Any more conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Two one zero.
Things are just, you got it? Just.
Nice song, well, Let It Go.
Let It Go. You got it?
Charlie must sing it, come on.
Do the breathing.
Oxygen.
We did a lot of that last night.
Really, yeah, that, that one's not worth needing oxygen.
So then bring us to our next job description, which is director of special services.
Changes in track changes. In collaboration with building principals, supervises special education teachers and paraprofessionals. Collaborates with, the next bullet, that works collaboratively with building principals and the director of human resources to coordinate, manage, and track their professional allocation placement, that has always been done through the director of, of special services. Uh, the director of special services has, uh, budgetary responsibility and is assigning authority on all of the, uh, uh, position control documents that pass through. So that, and they're also the person in the district who is, has overall responsibility for special education and the most qualified person to, uh, determine what makes the, the most effective placement of Paris.
Let me ask a dumb question. We added in the top supervisors in collaboration with building principals, supervises special ed teachers and paraprofessionals. If I read a para's job description, who would it say I report to?
If this approves, we would revise it. We have two ways to go. We're gonna revise it to say both, or we could say essentially to the principal, if we had to pick between the two. But the reality is, the director of, of, uh, of special services, uh, functions as supervises Paris, supervise special education teachers, has input into evaluations in both cases. as supervises paras, supervises special education teachers, has input into evaluations in both cases. And is involved in, in that sense. So in terms of collaborating and doing those things, that's happening now.
So is this a, so the, the, the principal has a day-to-day supervision and the director has a broad overview?
And the better skillset about what does good special education instruction look like? What is the role of the special ed teacher?
What I'm getting at is, careful I said this. It's one thing, I think, when you have more senior administration, bottom line reporting, that's incredibly common, matrix management, all that kind of stuff in business, I think my whole life. But, I just feel like paras should be, I mean, people should know, I report to one person. And I think the other piece is about, however we want to word, who's got some responsibility and oversight and collaboration and all that stuff is fine. I think it gets a little messy when people really don't know who they report to.
Especially in, yes, at that, in that, in that.
It's one thing to ask administration, I think, in general. You avoid a lot of issues down the road at times when you, when they come up, when it's not clear, who actually am I reporting to? So it's, it's not here, it's the, what made me ask the question is whatever your, the answer is to that impacts what this is.
I think down below the second bullet, that works collaboratively to coordinate, manage, and track is, is the important piece. The bullet up top in that section,
Yeah, it's the one up top.
Could just as well be, in this case, assists building principals with supervision of, in that case, principals, if everything is fine, building principal often will do. So I think that language change would actually follow in our policy that says, as much as possible, you should report to only one person. So I, I think that would actually work well.
And the other thing is you want to make sure you're not creating a gray area for administrators.
Yep.
For them to say, well, I thought the director of, of special services was handling that aspect because, so, I understand what we're trying to, we're trying to, to do here. But at the same time,
I, I think that language would, would accomplish it. Assist building principals with the supervision of special education teachers and paraprofessionals. Indicating that they are the person who has expertise.
So then a para's job description would say they report to the building principal?
Yes.
I would think so.
I'm good with that. Too good to be clear.
Yeah, and that's equally important too, because we've heard it in the past with you guys too, if you're into a situation with progressive discipline, is, well, who's going to do this, who's going to do that, and who's responsible for the follow-up, which is equally important.
That's exactly why I'm raising it. I think it all, the spirit all sounds great right now, but when there's an issue.
Should the word supervise,
Practical approach.
Come out in that bullet? Assist building principals with special education teachers and paraprofessionals, instead of having the word supervise in there. Just help.
Oh, I see.
And assist, and I'm doing on the supervisor, assist building principals with special education teachers and paraprofessionals. Because, I mean, are, are they really going to go in, are they going to supervise, are they really going to, is, is the director of special services actually going in and sitting and doing reviews? And supervising the direction on a daily basis or a weekly basis of, of these individuals?
I would say annually. She visits most teachers at least, most special education teachers at least once. And,
But she's not supervising them.
In many cases. Well, supervision in the sense that she's the ones that's going to make recommendations about what they need to do to improve. She's going to, to have some input on, in.
Well, that's not a supervising. Supervising is managing a person's daily activity.
I think that falls in the assisting part, I mean, assisting the, the principal. She'll assist as far as, you know, give some information as far as direction. Right. I would think the principal's the ones doing the supervision.
So why are we putting the word supervisor in the director of special services? The principal's the one going to be doing the day-to-day or the mo, majority of the supervising. And the, the responsibilities of the director of special services is to work with the principal, with these people, make sure that whatever the process that's occurring, they're helping that principal in that process. They're really helping, they're really helping the principal help the paras.
And quite honestly, the principal's job description is very broad and deep. And no one individual has a broad enough skillset, nor hours in the day to do everything. You really have to think of a good, effective administrative team. That means a good match between, you know, the, the areas of strength and experience between the principal and the assistant principal. And then complimentary pieces within, to, within the district to help them with curriculum and special education. So I really do see this as assisting in supervision. If, for example, were, the, the riff pool, for example, for special education is K through 12. And so assisting in supervision and, and evaluations in all three schools would allow some more consistency among those evaluations. That's going to be important if we ever have to riff someone in special education. I know it's a theoretical thing at this point in time, because our number of special educators is not decreasing. But that consistency across, and evaluations across three different schools and six different building administrators is an important function.
Well, I think you should bring this one back. I think you just cleaned it up. I mean, we've had a lot of conversation. I think that we're on the same page, I think, on clarifying it, but.
Who was watching who?
And, and the reason being is that if you go to page two, you talk about, you, you change, it says collaborate with building principals that needs to ensure, that's what, I think what you're saying there is more true than what you're trying to say up on the, the upper side. So if you want to move those up and make them more prevalent in the higher part of that process, I'm okay with that, because that, that sort of is what, I mean, I think those would be 504 compliance and, and section 504 plan would be very top of your responsibilities, then on the very bottom of, of your bullet points on that, in, in that aspect. Because those are probably,
The main focus.
Main focus, keeps us focused, keeps us out of hot water, keeps us, you know, that keeps the needs of the student at the, in the, in the, in the, in the forefront. And, you know, in, in, in reality, the whole process for, I believe for the director of, of special services is to make sure that all the schools are providing the correct amount of services that have been agreed upon through IEP 504s or whatever other discussions that may have occurred to help a student with their, with their learning process. So.
We'll come back to that one next week.
Thank you very much.
Now bring us on to policies. The first one is CCB, line staff relations.
Bring this, this policy or the recommended changes, and there are only a couple. In the third line, responsibility shall flow simply and clearly from the teachers, principals, administrators, and the superintendent to the school board. For example, at this point in time in school buildings, the reporting lines of several people do not go through the principals. We have the custodians who actually report to the site managers and then Frank. We have food service who'd report to Hilda and then Frank. And we have several employees who are, are district employees who, who report to the director of special education, the school psychologist, the social worker, and several others. So it's basically indicating that, that the existing structure. So it's either the principal administrator as defined in the job description.
Do we have to bring these back? Because these are policies. Do we have to do a first reading on that?
This is just an amendment, and I, because it's so small, I think you can approve this one. But if it has a lot of change.
That's a little cleanup.
If it has a lot of change, I think then you would want to move it to a first reading.
I don't think we're, we're changing the actual meaning of the policy. We're just clarifying.
What's exactly in place. So I'll make a motion to approve all the change, the amendment to policy CCB. Yes.
Second? Brother conversation? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Three zero zero. Next policy CF, school building in this.
Yeah.
Oh, this one, which is a complete rewrite?
This will be a first reading.
I'll see.
The old policy, if you look at the legal reference, that was to the Code of Administrative Rules, section 30401.
The title's still the same.
I'm sorry?
So the title's still the same.
Outstanding title.
So, what we had, the principal is an individual, is the responsible head and professional leader in the development of the educational program, yeah. And then it references the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules. Well, what I've pasted in its place is exactly what's in the New Hampshire Code of Administrative Rules. So, and whenever possible, if there's clarity in the rules, why interpret it? The only, the only change to that is in C, when it says the school principal shall assign direct responsibility evaluation of personnel employed in the, employed in the school. You could say that that's mitigated already by in accordance with local school board policy administrative rules and is, and is directed by the superintendent. So the, the, the all could be struck, or the all could stay in, because I think the rest of the sentence pretty clearly indicates that, you know, the existing structure indicates that Hilda will supervise the food service people and all. So the changes would be strike, insert, and then strike, the strike through in the all. But it is significant, so I think we would do two readings for this. And it also brings us in alignment with how we operate.
Alright. Any questions?
Nope.
Nope.
Alright. And the last policy is the right to know?
An update of KBA, which basically establishes some parameters. One of the more significant ones is the bottom of the procedures, which establishes that we will charge 30 cents per page for photocopying of any records requested. Inspection of records has no cost, other than that.
We added a timeline.
Yeah, the timeline is, here's your two. Oh, yeah, the bottom, in the event a citizen requests copies of records and fails to keep the appointment or inspect those, pick up the records within 30 days, such copies shall be discarded.
Where is that?
Bottom of the procedures.
Bottom of the procedures, it's the second page. We had had some right to know information that was.
Three years?
Three years old, still sitting there, because we, we had nothing in our policy that permitted us to get rid of stuff after it had viewed, or if people were, so we were, we generated probably 100 pounds of.
Oh my God, more than that. Four big huge tubs.
Sitting there?
Yep.
And had been since before my time.
So do you get the 30 cents per page before you print them?
Well, you could. We could create the electronic document and then charge.
Say it's, well, you see that the, the key is, is that we don't make the electronic document available outside of the building. So we won't put it on a flash drive, we won't put it on a, a disk or something like that, we won't email it. But they can come in and review it. The question is, is how do they review it? Do they review it on a computer, or do you guys give them a hard copy?
They can review it on a computer as long as it's on a separate drive, because I wouldn't want to give them any permissions to get into.
Well, that's what I'm saying. You'd have to have a computer that does have,
We have some dedicated laptops.
That doesn't have a flash drive, it doesn't have a access to the internet. So that they could come in and, well, you know, you're not going to stand right there with them and, and you don't want them. So, if you're going to have that, then you need to make sure that there's no way to download said documents.
Interestingly, I did receive a right to know request last week from a company halfway across the country who sent in a right to know request. They wanted to see every purchase order and supporting documentation since July of 2010.
And the reason being?
They sell software that allows you to comply with right to know requests. And I informed that, that our policy indicates that we, and they wanted to, you know, it sent to us. And so I indicated that we would fulfill this request at their convenience. We just needed a few days' notice and let us know when they were going to be arriving in New Hampshire to view those documents. I haven't heard back.
Dress warm. Bring your raincoat.
BS, dress warm, yeah.
But we, that, the requirement of the policy. I think, though, we should have something in the policy that says that the 30 cents can be waived. It's not unusual to see that. There are some cases where it may be.
May charge. I've seen it, may charge up to 30 cents per copy.
Is that something that, that you would want the, the board to waive that, or does that something you want to have the superintendent have the authority to waive?
Do we have a charge now?
We have not.
No.
That's why we have four tubs that we're throwing away.
No, we did. We did charge. We have a photocopying policy. We did charge.
Oh, did we? Did we collect?
Yes, we did. However, some pieces of it were not, were missing. But we, you know, we gave every effort for the person to come and.
I think we can leave it up for the superintendent to make that decision whether they're going to charge or not charge.
I've seen it, that the, the wording doesn't have a specific amount, but it's customary. The, the, the ongoing rate of, you know, for, the superintendent can establish a per copy rate. Otherwise, 10 years from now, we're going to be coming in and going at 70 cents.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd like to get 30 cents for a black copy in my profession. Yeah.
Leave it up to the discretion of the superintendent.
The addition of up to makes sense as well, because you have cases where somebody has to go through and redact stuff.
Oh, no, no, I, I'm, I'm with you. And I understand that 30 cents is not just for the photocopy. It includes the labor of the individual that has to go through that stuff. So.
Find it, print.
Yeah. Those are all recoverable costs under the Arizona statute.
And I think 30 cents per page is.
We don't get a whole.
Now, we don't have anything in there, so that sort of, that says, we have, unless we're going to add something, right now, we don't, nobody has any right to waive that.
I like Frank's idea of charging up to 30 cents.
At the discretion of the superintendent designee, which comes to the business office. They got to be the bad guys in charge.
The other way to go about is, is this, a set photocopying charge is much lower, and then indicate that they have to pay for, the law provides that you can charge them all reasonable costs.
Yeah, but it's easy to just roll that into, to a cost and just be done with it. You don't want to, you, because what you don't want to get into is having somebody have to micromanage their minutes of what they're, you know, I worked 22 minutes on it, two hours later, I worked 16 minutes on it. I mean, it's just, I mean, you know.
Why would you want to waive it?
What was that?
What would be the circumstances to waive it?
If, if it had to do with an educational type of procedure or something like that, and there were a thing, you know. See, I can't think of any reason to.
Honestly, if it's, if it's just one or two copies, it's easier just to make the one or two copies, then to charge 60 cents and then have to, it'll take us more time to process the deposit and give it to the treasurer, it has to go to the bank, who gets reimbursed for mileage. We'll lose money on that deal.
What the 30 cents saves us from is somebody coming in and saying, I want all your emails for the last three years.
Right, exactly. That's what I'm saying. So, why would you want to take it out? Just?
Actually, I, I don't think we should.
No. Leave 30 cents a copy?
And, you know, you guys have your discretion.
And Michelle wants to slip them two sheets of paper that she printed? We'll catch up with her.
We'll catch her. We'll catch her.
Ultra.
So you don't want me to put at superintendent's discretion?
I wouldn't.
No. Leave it alone.
Leave it. We don't get to the credit of the district. Leave it in. We don't get, to the credit of the district, we don't get that many requests, so.
No, we don't.
Not a big deal.
That's for hugs and kisses. So, do I want to make a motion on this?
We added a form, too.
We'll, we'll inventory the, the paper.
I'll make a motion to approve, I guess it's come back for our first reading.
Has the policy changed that much, or is it the procedures? And if it's the procedures, you don't have to approve changes?
Whatever Michelle tells me.
Policy really hasn't changed too, too much, but it's, it's board's discretion.
Well, let's just be safe and don't think you're going to get a large crash of right to knows between now and next Wednesday, and let's just finish it up next week. That just makes it easier.
So, bring this one back to?
Yep.
It sort of falls under the line of the board has of not voting, and-
If you do have a large one, just call an emergency meeting. We'll come running in.
We'll come running in and say, accept that one!
It'll be five days before we can do anything about it anyway.
There you go.
All right. That'll bring us to the manifest.
Free signatures.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Public input? With that, it'll bring us into non-public, non-public session RSA 91, semicolon, 3, 000.
You locked in.
You won. You won the lottery for this one.
First, you get a drying rack, and now you get this, huh?